This time I'll call the May 2nd, 2022 county council meeting to order. At this time, I'll recognize our vice chairman, Robert Winkler, from District 3, who will lead us in invocation and pledge of allegiance.
If you would stand, please. Lord, we thank you for this day and thank you for the beautiful weather and the blessings you bring us every day. We ask you for wisdom this evening as we look at the issues before us, wisdom to make the right decisions, the right votes, to do what's best for the majority of the people. All these things, we're asking your name. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will welcome everyone here tonight. It's good to have a good crowd and to hear the pledge of allegiance said in unison. I always enjoy that. We do have a skeleton crew tonight, some unexpected illness, and some folks that are out of town, but we appreciate you being here tonight. At this time, I'm going to recognize these folks who, if you will come forward for the oath of office, Paul Wise with Bethesda Fire Tax District Board and Tracy Plunkett, Council on Aging, if you are here and can come forward. Our county attorney will meet you up front and he will swear you in. And as you make your way forward, we do, as a council, want to say thank you so much for your willingness to serve. It's done voluntarily, you don't get any pay, and most of the time, you don't get any thanks, but we do appreciate it and we thank you for your service. Thank you, Ms. Plunkett. We are very blessed in York County to have not one, but four really stellar school districts in our community, and we are very blessed as well to have so many dedicated teachers who serve us. My daughter's been teaching for two years now, and I see firsthand that the job of teachers goes way beyond teaching. You're a counselor, you're a role model, you're a motivator, encourager, that keep adding to the list, but they have a huge impact on everyone's lives in our school district. And I know, speaking for the council up here, all of us have those teachers who have made a huge impact in our lives. We have some very special folks here tonight, the Teacher of the Year from each of our four school districts in our county. We are working on a proclamation that we will send you in the mail later. And in just a minute, what I'll ask you to do is, if you will, once we finish this next little piece of the presentation, if you'll come forward so that we can have a picture made with you all, and you're certainly welcome to speak if you want to, you don't have to, but we're going to have a video that Greg Suskin, I want to say thank you to him and to Josh Stender, they put this together real quickly, and we're excited to be able to share this.
It's an honor to be represented as one of the best in York. It's a true opportunity to be a voice for our school here at York Conference High School. Probably the best thing about this job is that when you help a student conquer math, something that a lot of them think they can't do, and that I get the opportunity to do that for students at all levels.
Under, jump over.
This is my 44th year teaching and coaching. We have so many great teachers here at Crowder's Creek, we have so many great teachers in the Clover School District, and it's an honor to have been selected. It's very rewarding, it's really rewarding. And I can see, you know, the students here at the elementary level and, you know, the improvement they make from day to day.
It was incredible when I heard that I was chosen as the District Teacher of the Year, but also, I'm just very happy to represent our district, to represent all teachers, and be able to share my voice in things that I think are important in education. I believe that every student can learn if someone just kind of lights that excitement in them.
I think school should be a great experience for all students, and so I really want to make a difference in that way. I think learning and growing really makes us the best people we can be. It's a huge honor. It means to me that I am surrounded with a community of great educators, and it's hard to be the one that is recognized because I work with so many great, hardworking teachers.
Thank you again, Greg and Josh, for putting that together. Again, want to recognize Dr. Leslie Reel from York, Coach Carol Hester from Clover, Amy Medina from Rock Hill School District, and Laura Merk from Fort Mill School District. All these teachers were named Teachers of the Year from their respective districts. And Ms. Merk was actually one of the five finalists for the State Teacher of the Year, so we're very, very proud of you all, we're excited to have you here, and we would love for you to come forward. If you want to speak, you certainly can, I'm not asking you to do that if you don't feel comfortable, but we would like to have a picture of you, if you could come stand in front of the council bench so that we can recognize you. Thank you very much.
We just want to say thank you guys for our team here and for celebrating teachers with us, teachers all over the county, all over the state, we need the community's support. So the fact that you guys are here and involved in supporting us, so we need the support for teachers and for student support for county education. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much for coming. Thank you for being here. At this time, we move to the public forum session of our program, and what this means is that we have a healthy list, I think it's actually full tonight, of individuals who'd like to speak, and this is an opportunity for you to speak to us. We don't engage, you have two minutes to speak your mind. If you would, would you please come forward to the podium, if you'll state your name, give your address, and then what you will notice is here on the screen, after two minutes, it will start blinking, and I hate being rude, but I have to do that, that's part of the job I have to do. So if you would please pay attention to that so I don't have to cut you off, I would very much appreciate it. And again, since we don't engage with you, we ask that you refrain from any personal comments or attacks to anyone individually, and just state the issues that you're here for. First, and I will go ahead and apologize, sometimes I can't read and I pronounce, I mess up the names, but I'll do my best. First up, Gary Wickham.
Okay, Gary Wickham, 336 Wendell Drive, Fort Mill. I retired 13 years ago, and my wife and I chose to came to Fort Mill with the express purpose of moving into the tower. Prior to my retirement, I spent 35 years managing and developing senior retirement and healthcare facilities. I have experience in feasibility studies, property and management, marketing, and successfully overseeing the projects we manage. I contracted with a denominational headquarters and developed and managed 12 facilities in seven different states on selected church properties. I trust my background will give confidence in what I have to say, but more importantly, I hope you will further appreciate the professional preparations and the expertise found at Morningstar. That matchup will match up or exceed any reputable commercial developers you may already work with. The following is a list, a quick list of six we haves, which should justify any reasonable requirements for approval by the churches of the churches' project. We have church property on the campus ready for development right now. Number two, we have a successful six-year track record of development and management expertise in our independent adult senior housing units that is full and has a strong waiting list. Number three, we have already in place a Morningstar operational teams for security, housekeeping, maintenance, yard care, accounting, HR department, sales counselor and administrator, and activities coordinator. An interesting aside, over 40% of the current residents are single women over 55 who moved to heritage communities because it was safe. We have walk-around security and quality, career-minded neighbors.
Thank you, Mr. Wickham. It goes by fast, I'm very sorry. I did give some extra seconds, but we have a full pack. If you would like to leave your comments to the side and we'll make sure to circulate them to council, yes, sir?
Right here?
She's raising her hand. Thank you, sir. Jess Eckberg.
Hi. Jess Eckberg, 375 Starlight Drive, Fort Mill. There are buildings in York County that are much older than Heritage Tower, yet the county doesn't publicly raise innuendo about the health, safety, and welfare of anybody else. That's because the staff is apparently obsessed with destroying the tower for anti-religious reasons. The innuendo is designed to try and drive people away from Morningstar, to frighten people from attending worship there, to cut down on ministry contributions, and to attack the credibility of Morningstar and its leaders and members when there is no evidence at all to support such innuendo. The people of York County deserve the truth from its government. York County citizens should not be subjected to lies put out in reckless press releases by county staff. Whoever is responsible for the false reckless press release, including any members of the legal staff responsible for these lies, should be fired. And the county should apologize to Morningstar and other believers for the anti-religious verbal assault of its former chair and for the false comments now in this press release. You ladies and gentlemen are supposed to be our elected public servants. You're supposed to serve your constituents, not be at war with them, and you're especially not supposed to pick a fight with a church in an effort to harm the church's ability to carry out its God-adjained ministry purposes. The county attorney is not an elected official here. You are. To say you cannot discuss a matter on advice of counsel, and in some cases, not even look in the eye when we speak, is an act of political cowardice. You ran for the job, and the buck stops with you, not with the county attorney. If you're inclined to pass ultimate decision-making over to the county attorney or any other unelected staff members, you should step aside immediately as a council member, hand the job to someone else who understands who is in charge, who is responsible to the people, and where the buck stops.
Thank you, Ms. Eckberg. Larry Byrd.
Larry Byrd, 375 Starlight Drive. I have to start out with a question. Do you govern according to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of South Carolina, as everybody here? We are a constitutional republic. You are supposed to represent us and work for us. I know you campaigned that you do work for us, all of you. Do you work for us regardless of whether constituents are a church or a big developer, you should work for all of us? It does seem like you favor big developers, Dr. Horton and also the Panthers. I know you rush to solve the Panther crisis, and that is good, but does the church get equal time and equal representation as the Panthers and Dr. Horton? This looks like religious discrimination and First Amendment rights violations, favored treatment. I believe the Constitution calls for liberty and justice for all. When you go into executive session tonight, I do have a request for you, that you vote to drop the lawsuit and allow us to build the tower. And I have one more request, and I'll sit down. In fact, could you have a vote right now, here in public, and drop the lawsuit and allow us to build? This will, what will this do? This will bring the county together, this will bring unity, kona niya, and allow us all of us to work together to help save our freedom and the way of life. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Debbie Anthony.
Debbie Anthony, 117 David Court, Fort Mill, 29715. My favorite part of Fort Mill is Main Street. I was worried during COVID because it felt deserted, but it has come back. Main Street is busy with restaurants, shops, and sports bars, even a world-renowned hot sauce company. I want to thank you for approving the permits for those businesses to open or reopen, to build or to restore. I want to thank you also for approving the permit to build the bandshell right around the corner from Main Street in Fort Mill in Elisha Park. At Morningstar, restoration is what we do. We have completely restored a half a million square foot facility. We have 395 churches and ministries in 50 states and 193 countries. That is 99% of the world. Our media reaches millions of people through multiple platforms, so you folks are now world famous. Oh, happy day. In addition to our own local church, we are a conference center and a hotel. We have a K-12 school and accredited university. About 100 people live in our already 55-plus community. There's so much more, it's too much to mention. We want to restore the tower. Why would you say no to allowing us to move forward? You seem to be in favor of restoration. Jesus believed in restorations. Can you imagine what Mary Magdalene's life would have been like if Jesus did not believe that things and people could be restored? Maybe none of you have ever needed to be restored from anything. It seems you are holding our plans hostage because another ministry that occupied our building over 30 years ago cannot be forgotten. We wonder, is it religious discrimination? And I'm sure you know the old saying, "If it walks like a duck."
Thank you, ma'am. David Herr.
David Herr, 638 Trent Home Trail, Fort Mill. Honored council members, thank you for your time and thank you for your service to York County. We appreciate you so very much. I am coming to speak on the tower. I have been a York County resident for 23 years, and in the interest of full disclosure, I need to tell you, I am a Morningstar employee, but I come today with a unique perspective of having been a Realtor in our county for 25 years. I have watched the immediate neighbor, Regent Park, which is the housing development right adjacent to the former PTL property. From 1998 to 2005, it was very difficult to sell in Regent Park. They had lower price per square foot and longer days on the market than surrounding communities, partly because they were adjacent to an abandoned property with vacant buildings. That's never good for real estate. When Morningstar bought that property and repurposed it in 2005, Regent Park watched their property values go through the roof. They now enjoy shorter days on the market and higher price per square footage than similar neighborhoods around them. So the development, Morningstar's development of its campus has been nothing but positive for everyone that lives within a five-mile radius. I say all that to say this, the development of the tower will have the same positive effect on York County. Allow Morningstar to put $40 or $50 million in developing the tower and make it a thriving enterprise, and you will watch other deep-pocketed investors come to downtown Fort Mill and other areas and watch them bring their own renovations and gentrifications to those areas. Develop the tower will be nothing but good for York County. Please drop your lawsuit against Morningstar Fellowship Church. York County will thank you for it, and again, thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. William Nugent.
I'm William Nugent, 375 Starlight Drive, Fort Mill, South Carolina. I've mentioned to this council that I was in the residential construction business for over 35 years, and I've done many renovations of dilapidated buildings. I've done renovations of burnt-out buildings and dealt with mold issues. I've also said that the tower on the Morningstar property is not dilapidated. It is not falling down, it's not structurally unsound, it's been valued at $15 million, and it's 50,000 tons of concrete and steel that's begging for renovation. It's absolutely a prime candidate for completion. We are not PTL, we are not doing a timeshare arrangement. I'm a senior citizen myself, and I own an apartment on the Morningstar campus, and I love it. I believe that the real reason for the lawsuit is that certain rich and powerful people in our county simply don't like to look at the tower. That's what it all boils down to. Certain rich people don't want to look at it. The lawsuit is to waste $15 million worth of church property for no reason at all. To waste that property is a sin against God. To waste that tower, the Catholics might call it a mortal sin, they might even call it a sacrilege. Either way, it's held damning sin against God to destroy such church property. It's stealing from the poor to give to the rich, and it's an abomination. For the rich not to have to look at the tower, the lawsuit would waste that beautiful tower, and you would hurt the poor, you would hurt the people of York County and hurt people all over the world. So I urge you to reconsider your position and to drop the lawsuit.
Thank you, Mr. Nugent. Tommy Atkins.
Yeah, I'm Tommy Atkins, I live at 7245 Park Place Road in York. The Panthers facility problem was and is a special interest tax, a giveaway that is not sound in economical growth. The county should not be involved in the rich man's welfare backroom deals for the, for example, 30 or 40 years of tax resolution incentives for this deal, that is not good economic development. I have not seen anyone from the county give me a deal on my business, and I am sure many businesses could say the same. I stand for self-reliance and run our businesses the way we choose and not to eat out of the government hog trough. As long as you keep putting citizens' taxpayer dollars in this trough, the hogs will just get fatter and fatter. Special interests, economic development gets fatter as time goes by. The county is responsible for police, fire, emergency service, waste handling, schools and roads. No more backroom deals, no more wasteful spending, no more taxing without truly representing. Give the citizens some relief and let the tax funding recreational bill expire without replacing it with the minimum. Let the citizens of York County know that you heard them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Atkins. Carolyn Atkins.
Carolyn Atkins, 7245 Park Place Road, York. I do not agree with the last closed-door deal offered to the Panthers. It was a bad economic development resolution to a bad situation. Development is not equal to growth. Backroom deals are never good for the citizens as a whole. They serve special interest development. I also feel that the tax funding recreation should expire. This tax does not represent all of the citizens of the county. The county already has passive funding for parks, boat landings, Brattonsville events, et cetera. If a county district feels it has a need for such a tax-funding recreation, it can pass a resolution or tax for that district and those citizens, not the whole county, which would not receive the benefits of such a tax. To the citizens that say they cannot speak in public, you can write letters, email, or call your representatives. Let your representatives know you are watching and you care. To the county council, thank you for your service to the community. We, the people, will stand. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins. David Jones.
David Jones, 2570 Chester Highway here in York. Issue I had come before me, April of 18th of this year, at 8:00 in the morning, had attended magistrate court on Heckle Boulevard in Rock Hill. What I observed once getting there was a handwritten sign on the window that said, "No cell phones and no watches" in the building. Now, judging from the 30 or so potential jurors that walked to the door in the rain, it was pouring down rain from 7:45 to after 8:00 in the morning, when everyone was requested to be at court, apparently, nobody in the magistrate court system informed them in their jury notification that they were not allowed to bring cell phones or, for some reason, watches into that building, much less the courtroom. My issue is this, is the unequal dispensation of justice when the prosecution's office has access to something like this? It's much more in this day and age than a cellphone. This is a law library. If somebody is representing themselves pro se, in other words, representing themselves in a criminal offense, they're not entitled to bring the cellphone in the building, much less the courtroom, so that they can look up statutes and the actual verbiage of the law that's relevant to the case at hand. It's not only my opinion, 2019, the American Bar Association in their annual meeting at San Francisco had a resolution regarding the banning of cell phones in the courts of law around the country, not particularly this particular jurisdiction, but in the country as a whole. Basically, why? It gives unfair advantage to the prosecution. The scales of justice are supposed to be not only blindfolded, blind, but they're supposed to be balanced. When a potential defendant or witness, not only is this a law library, but this is evidence, video that I can cast on your 80-inch Samsung televisions that you got three of in the courtroom over there, but I can also show pictures that are evidentiary. I can show evidence that would...
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mary Williams.
Good evening, I'm Mary Williams. I live at 313 Squirrel Lane in Lake Wiley. All of you, the four of you that are here tonight, have seen my husband and I up here before when we have hot topics. My first topic, though, is if you look in your packet, there's an invitation for each of you and all the county council members to come to a fun day on the lake with underserved children from your district. So I've got a list of the agencies there. If one of them is in your area, we'd love to have you come out on May 21st. But now, the real reason I'm here tonight. I'm talking about the York County Recreation Tax. Now, this is a tax that shows up on my bill somewhere, actually, five bills somewhere, because I've got a couple of cars and a boat, plus our home, and I don't know if it's the unincorporated tax, or is it part of the Lake Wiley Recreation Tax, the special tax that I stumped for and also voted for? And I'm looking at the, I'm looking up at the council members, and I'm looking 2006, 2007, y'all didn't make this tax, I can see. The only ones I noticed that were on there were Perry Johnson and Tom Smith from my area. I have these wonderful tax documents due to, I want to give a shout out to Lead Clerk Auditor, her name is Tammy Green. She was so efficient and so polite today, as I was trying to figure out how much money am I paying into this, what I'm going to call a duplicate tax, because now that we have the special tax district in Lake Wiley, I'm paying taxes over there, we've got our own rec park, but there's also this unincorporated recreation tax that I'm paying, and I feel like that we're paying, especially in our district, double taxes. Oh, gosh. Oh, gosh, I'm feeling nervous. Sorry about that. So anyways, vote for the sunset. I appreciate your time. I'm going to go home and watch from home as you have your discussion later on.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
It's nice seeing you all again. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Chris Nassaway. I'm sure I massacred that. I'm sorry.
Good evening, honored members of the council, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Chris Nassaway, two-twenty-six Township Drive, Fort Mill, South Carolina. A little history, which you're all, I'm sure, well aware of. Why is the tower even there? Two hundred and forty-six years ago, this July, our founding fathers came to this country in hopes of finding religious liberty. Some of them were driven here because they were under massive oppression. Two score and four years ago, to put it in the words of Abraham Lincoln, to use some verbiage from him, Heritage USA was founded here in York County. A little over ten years later, the biggest debacle probably in this county's history happens. And some of you probably have family members who were affected by that. And we're not here to dismiss any of that. But fifteen years later, Morning Star Ministry acquired the property in its absolute ruins and began its restoration. The rest of the property has been restored except for the tower because the ministry has honored the county's requests not to do anything with it. Going against what this tower stands for grates against our liberties as Americans. We have religious liberty that we want to... The tower needs to be restored, and we want to be able to exercise that as well as all of our constitutional rights. So when you look at this later on in your meeting, I ask you to consider the community that is being affected. That has already been brought up in this meeting. But consider what it would do for York County as a whole if this was approved, if the lawsuit was dropped. I'm asking you to consider, and will you do the right thing and just drop it?
Thank you, sir.
And allow freedom for the county and for the people of this county.
Thank you, sir. Billy Hagner.
My name's Billy Hagner. I live at nineteen-oh-one Voyager Road in York. I'm here tonight to comment on the recreation tax that is imposed on all personal property to everyone that lives in unincorporated areas. So that's everybody that does not live in a city, in a municipality. This is a one-point-five-mill tax in which the funds are transferred to the municipality. So they're taking money from the people outside the municipalities and giving it to the ones in the municipalities. These funds are used to help pay for the recreation in these areas. The transfer of these funds, in turn, gives money that we have no voice on. So it's really kind of taking money from us and giving it to other people to use, whereas if it was given in the county, we could come here and talk to y'all about the use of the money. Most taxpayers are probably not even aware of this because it's not shown on your... It's a line item on your tax bill. It does come up under a combined line item of unincorporated area, but it's not called out specifically for that. Although this is not a large amount of money, we need to take every opportunity... I'm sorry, I'm having a little trouble reading my own writing here. But to make a long story short, in my opinion, rather than giving the money to the municipalities, we need to...
Thank you, Mr. Hagner.
...drop this tax and let them charge extra for the people that use it.
Thank you, sir. Sharon Gitten?
Sharon Gitten, fifteen-twenty Autumn Brook Lane. My late husband and myself moved to South Carolina from New York City eleven years ago. The reason for moving here was that this is one of the few places that lived that feels like real United States of America. Now, last couple of years that changed. Taxes in Rock Hill almost doubled in the last two years. And rumor has it that we are actually paying double taxes for grown men playing ball for entertainment all day long. Widows, disabled, single mothers paying double tax to pay through the way for grown men to play ball. Now, those grown men will turn around and brag about their immense salary and super profits that they make playing that ball, which, God bless them, this is their money. But they should pay their way to build their facilities without using less privileged. And everybody in Rock Hill is paying for it. Whether you rent or whether you own, you pay for it. I think this is outrageous. I think the county has to have transparency where the money is going because rumor has it that Rock Hill didn't meet its expectations, financial expectations. And the meaning of it seems to me that we're going to pay more taxes and not know where it's going. And I think that has to stop, and we have to be more transparent. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. William Mataro Krut.
William Mataro Krut, one-nine-four Lake Commons Drive. Integrity is the practice of being honest and showing consistent and uncompromising adherence to a strong moral and ethical principles and values. In response to COVID, York County government deemed that nonessential employees would be allowed to work from home. However, some departments were deemed essential, and those employees were expected to bear jobs each and every day. Solid Waste Collection Recycling was one such department. The collection centers were staffed by attendants that were part of the essential employee group, and they showed up every day they were scheduled to work. On July the twentieth, twenty-twenty, York County Council voted to issue a thousand dollars to each county employee. The next day, I received an email from HR Department stating that only full-time employees were receiving these bonuses. In response, I sent an email copy to county manager, public works director, asking why the attendants would not receive this bonus. To this date, there's been no response to that email. In the envelopes that will be given to county council and county management, I did a fifty-dollar bill. This is from the bonus I received as the attendance supervisor. I am returning it to those who made the decision not to give the bonus to the attendants and to the council members who saw fit to support that decision by not sticking with what they'd already approved. I cannot in good conscience keep this money when the employees I was responsible for and who were more exposed to the virus than all of the employees combined by a vast margin did not get one. At the start of this address, I read the meaning of integrity. I am not questioning integrity of county management or county council in general, but based on the action of management and the lack of action of council in this matter, in my opinion, that question has already been answered.
Thank you, sir. Holly Simmons. Holly Simmons? Okay. We have one last person, Richard Roach.
Thank you, councilman, for the jobs y'all do. Y'all do a great job for York County. My name is Richard Roach. I live at forty-one-fifty Mockingbird Lane. I'm a farmer and a landowner in the Bethesda community. I would like to talk to you about the Panther deal. I think that was a bad step in York County's decision to maybe go in with the city of Rock Hill to bail this thing out. I don't understand the part about Tefor owning the land, and the city and the county don't have nothing to stand on. I think it's a bad idea, and if it comes back up again, I think the county should stay out of it. I'm on the board over at York Electric. And let me tell you what happened several years ago. They got in an endeavor with Sant T Cooper to build two nuclear plants in Jenkinsville, South Carolina. Well, this went on, and the cost kept going up and got enormous. Well, Sant T Cooper had to file bankruptcy. Well, it's going to cost the members of York Electric about a hundred million dollars is their share they're going to have to pay back for that kind of mistake. And that could be a mistake that the county makes if they go through with this Panther deal. So I advise y'all not to consider this again. It's probably before it's over with, we'll break the city of Rock Hill. I would like to invite all the co-op members to come to the annual meeting Saturday and get their twenty-dollar credit and vote. Maybe it's time for some changes on the board. I don't know. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Roach.
Good job you do.
This concludes our public forum session. Do we have a motion on consent agenda?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. We move now to the public hearings. Item one, rezoning action. Hold a public hearing and consider first reading, case number twenty-two dash oh-five-three-seven-six-zero-zero-zero-zero-zero-one-zero, to rezone from ID to AGC, seven-point-nine-six acres in District Two. Ms. Dill.
Good evening, everybody. This request is to rezone one property from ID to AGC. It's located on Green Pond Road in Clover, just south of fifty-five Ridge Road. The request here is to rezone to allow the property owner to convert an existing building to a residential use. As you can see, the aerial, there's a very large vacant building, and he wants to be able to make that into a residential use. Staff recommends approval. Same thing for the planning commission by a vote of eight to zero. The property is surrounded by AGC. The comprehensive plan for the area is residential. We do have the condition there that says if you do pass this rezoning to either remove that building or apply to have that building permits necessary to make it to a residence within ninety days.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of this request? And if you would, if you would come forward, again, state your name and give your address. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak against?
Move to close. Second.
Motion and a second to close public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Do we have a new motion?
I'll make a motion to approve first reading with the condition of, within ninety days of rezoning, the existing storage building must be removed, or the property owner must have filed for the building permit necessary to convert the building to a residence. If the property owner opts to convert the building, they must diligently pursue completion. Expiration of building permits necessary for conversion shall constitute a violation of this condition.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Move to number two, rezoning action. Hold a public hearing and consider first reading, case number twenty-two dash oh-six, tax map number four-six-zero-zero-zero-zero-zero-four, to rezone from RUD to AGC, eighty-point-five acres in District Two. Ms. Dill.
Sure. This property is to rezone from RUD to AGC. It's on Kingsbury Road in Clover. It's an eighty-point-five-acre parcel. As you can see from the aerial, a very large green, heavily wooded. There's a lake in the middle of the property. The purpose for the rezoning is the applicant would like to be able to construct two houses on that property, which you cannot do in RUD, but you can do in AGC. And so they're asking the request to go to AGC. Staff recommends approval. Same thing for the planning commission by a vote of eight to zero.
Any questions for staff? Thank you, Ms. Dill. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of this rezoning? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak against?
Move to close.
Second.
Motion and a second to close public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, public hearing is closed. Do we have a new motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Number three, rezoning action. Hold a public hearing and consider first reading, twenty-two dash oh-seven-three-five-seven, tax map number three-five-seven-zero-zero-zero-zero-zero-two-nine, a portion to rezone from RUD to LI, one-point-six-nine acres in District Three. Ms. Dill.
This is to rezone a property from RUD to LI. It's located on Meadow Road, just east of Highway twenty... Three-twenty-one in the Clover area. It's to rezone a one-point-six-nine portion of the property, and it's then to combine that portion with the property adjacent to it to make the business go a little bit larger. Needs more room. Need to get it rezoned. As you can see on the aerial, there is an existing building on the adjacent property, and that already is zoned LI. So they're going to expand the area that's been highlighted in yellow or blue to the other property. And the purpose for that right now, the property is, I believe it's vacant. It's been a storage building over a year. It's been a variety of different uses. But right now, they wanted to put in a new plumbing business, wants to locate there. You can see here, the two areas that are circled, the top part there, that's for the septic drain fields. And then the larger oval is actually for building a driveway to go behind the existing buildings. And so they're going to add that area there to the existing parcel. Staff recommends approval as well as planning commission. The comprehensive plan does not have LI for this area here, but we feel as though it's expanding a business to be able to utilize the better use of their property. So staff support that same thing for the council or planning commission. We do have the typical condition. You're saying that if you do approve this rezoning, it's to submit your subdivision plat to recombine the property within ninety days.
Thank you, Ms. Dill. Any questions for staff?
Yeah, I just have one question down here. So the... Everything in red will be the same zoning? Yes, ma'am. It'll stay RUD. Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Dill. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of this rezoning? If you would come forward.
Good evening, council. Chair Lady Cox and fellow council. My name is Dwayne Christopher, twenty-four-twenty-four India Hook Road, Suite two-twenty, Rock Hill, South Carolina. Need to bend over here. And I'm the applicant for the owner. It is going to be for a plumbing business. You might recall, three years ago, we rezoned the section because of the two warehouses were vacant, and that owner decided to move on. And option one, Mr. Perham has decided to purchase the property, and he also purchased the larger property.
The diagram there isn't quite exactly. It's a little bit more... It follows the shape of the creek. And as Ms. Dill explained, the two buildings are going to save, they're going to renovate, have an office, and then some warehousing for the plumbing supply. So instead of having the truck coming in like the previous owner, we're just going to have the driveway go to the back. It's just going to be a ground drive. And to accommodate that, since the other zoning ended right there at the building, we're going to have the driveway go to the back. And then, since the existing septic field is where the new driveway is going to be, we have to locate it further to the north. So it's primarily just the logistics thing, just so we could use the building. And, but, you know, you can't use the rest of the property. But both properties are owned by the same... Sorry, we had to come in front of you on this, but just...
Thank you, Mr. Christopher.
Any others, any questions?
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor? Is there anyone who wishes to speak against?
Move to close.
Second. Motion and a second to close public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, public hearing is closed. Do we have a new motion?
Move to approve with the condition that the property must be subdivided so that no more than one zoning district is applied to a parcel. An approved subdivision plat encompassing the portion of the properties on to LI shall be recorded with the York County Register of Deeds within ninety days of the rezoning approval. Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. We move to number four, rezoning action. Hold a public hearing and consider first reading twenty-two dash oh-eight, tax map number six-five-five-zero-zero-zero-zero-eleven, six-five-five-zero-zero-zero-zero-zero-fifty-seven, six-five-five-zero-zero-zero-zero-zero-eighty-three, zoning request to rezone from AGC and RMX-ten to RMX-six, ten point eight-two acres in District One. Ms. Dill.
Thank you. This one, as you mentioned, AGC and RMX-ten to RMX-six, it's off of Colethorpe Road in the Fort Mill area. It's ten point eight-two acres. It's for three parcels. Currently, the three parcels, two of them actually have houses on them and one of them is vacant. It's in a wedge between Colethorpe Road and I-77. Purpose here is to be able to develop a forty-eight unit townhome project with access onto Colethorpe Road and a stub out to some vacant land to south of that. This area here, it's near, just south of Shutterfly. It is also near some other office uses. There's a hotel neighborhood across the road as well. There's still a few houses that are left over from Haber Sham and was moved across the road. There's a little bit of residential there as well. Mostly though, it is more of a industrial commercial area here. As you can see from the zoning chart here, there's a very mixture of different kinds of zones for the area, but everything pretty much south of Colethorpe is either GC, LI, UD. There's still a few of those parcels there that for this rezoning here and to nearby it, that are still RMX-twenty, or ten actually, and probably they're underused. They might do something else, become something else, get redeveloped. The comprehensive plan, this area does show for I-77 corridor employment, which is not aligned with the exact, with the request here. So staff is recommending denial and same thing for the planning commission. Once again, everything from the Colethorpe Road to the I-77 is considered that I-77 commercial or corridor area there, that we see more of light industrial, commercial and not so much residential. We're recommending denial.
Any questions for staff? Thank you, Ms. Dill. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of this request?
My name is Margaret Puckett at nineteen-nineteen Manor Court in Fort Mill, South Carolina. Wait till my presentation gets up here. Thank you. Good evening, York County council members, York County staff and members of the public. Thank you for your time tonight. I'm joined here this evening by Ben Johnson with Robinson and Bradshaw. BGE is represented as well, our engineering consultant. MPV is a commercial brokerage firm here to speak on behalf of the Hinson and the Nevins family, who are the longtime property owners in York County. Additionally present tonight, we've got local surrounding residents here on behalf of TriPoint's in support of the proposed project. And finally, I'm Margaret Puckett, Vice President of Land Acquisition for TriPoint Homes. TriPoint is a residential for-sale home builder and we're proposing a townhome community in northern York County. I've snipped a few slides that show and depict the location as Diane presented. I wanna highlight the location. We began rezoning this request at the end of last year and this property was actually located in Joel Hamilton's district. I don't think I'd be standing up here at this time if it was in Mr. Audette's district, understanding where he stands on townhome growth in the Fort Mill area. Through waiting through the new UDO approval, the council member districts were redrawn and it is our understanding that come November, this area will fall into Tom Audette's district. I would like to kindly remind everyone up here on council that the location of our project hasn't changed, just the county member assignments. We're requesting to rezone this property from AGC to an RMX-ten to RMX-six, which allows for attached townhome housing. Sorry, I'm having a little trouble here with this. One thing I'd like to really point out, an inconsistency that I would like to respectfully bring to everyone's attention regarding the council this evening, is the staff's recommendation and planning board's seven-to-one denial of our request on April eleventh. The staff report assumes that the existing residential of any significance is north of Colethorpe Road and assumes that the houses south of Colethorpe will all transition to office and institutional. Respectfully, I wanna point out some significant residences that are located on the south side of Colethorpe Road. Nineteen eighteen Colethorpe is a forty-three-hundred square foot home owned by David Jennings and nineteen twenty-six Colethorpe Road is a twenty-seven-hundred square foot home owned by Catherine Jennings. These two home sites were originally located on the north side of Colethorpe Road in what sits today and known as Haber Sham. The hundred-and-twenty-five acres that Four Star developed and sold, single-family homes, was the Jennings property. Their homes were physically removed off of the foundations and put onto the south side of Colethorpe Road. This happened in two thousand seventeen and I just wanna point out in my PowerPoint slide, Mr. Jennings' home in two thousand seventeen is on the left, or two thousand eighteen, and today it's shown with much greener grass, you can obviously, that they've put some time into improving their homes that were relocated from the south side to the north, or the north side to the south side of Colethorpe. Same with Catherine Jennings' home. You can see she didn't have any sod, no landscaping. Really, the home was, again, uplifted off of a foundation and moved across the street. I wanna point out that the York Comprehensive Long-Term Plan was approved in two thousand sixteen and it wouldn't have captured these significant residences on the south side of Colethorpe Road because they were moved in seventeen after Haber Sham was approved and began development. There's a significant backstory to the Jennings family who are present here this evening and I will shortly say that if it wasn't for their family's land legacy in northern York County, neighborhoods like Haber Sham and the future development of Southbridge wouldn't exist. Even without the Jennings significant residences on the south side of Colethorpe, but especially if they are considered, our proposed project is a very good transition to locate between the existing institutional and light industrial use and the single-family detached housing on the south side to the north side of Colethorpe Road. TriPoint has additionally received support from surrounding land use owners, beginning at the PowerPoint slide, number one and two are the Jennings. Barbara Newton is also present here. She's highlighted number three. PMC Properties is number four and Forest Hill Church, number five, are all in support of seeing a residential use on this property due to just compatibility adjacencies to the residential that exists in the neighborhood. Here's a letter from Forest Hill Church. They wrote this to us saying, "We're in support of a residential development here. We would not like to see an institutional or light industrial use here. Our childcare facility and our children's ministries back up to the backside of this property line. We'd like to see a residential use where we actually would propose or want to have connectivity, walkability to that church, which potentially would lead to access for residents of Haber Sham to be able to walk to Forest Hill Church through that area." Here's our site plan. We've taken into account the new UDO, which allows for, or requires for much more open space, pocket parks, amenity spaces. All of that has been incorporated into our new plan. And again, that compatibility with the surrounding landowners, we feel as though our uses are better than what the long-term comprehensive plan is calling for. Now, TriPoint, we're in the life-changing business. We're dedicated to designing homes, neighborhoods and experiences that inspire and uplift our customers, our team members and in the communities that we serve. Life that inspires homes, homes that inspire life. It's our toughest mission and highest calling. We take this part really seriously. We have local design capabilities and we build a high-quality product. Some of these images are homes, single-family homes that we built across the country. The next slide is interior design. All the new finishes, modern trends. We have a design center in South Charlotte off of Providence Road in Waverly where all of our homeowners have the ability to come and pick and choose their finishes inside their homes. Lastly, these are some elevations of existing product that will be very, very similar to what we're proposing on the south side of Colethorpe Road. One thing I wanna point out that we have a lot of control over, especially as I speak to this room, this slide shows houses built in this country by decade dating back to nineteen thirty. You look at our severe deficit of housing that we've built since two thousand, in the last decade, two thousand ten to two thousand nineteen, we're severely undersupplied. And that is really causing a lot of the pricing surges that we're seeing today. There is just not enough housing stock, whether it be in Fort Mill, whether it be in Rock Hill, York County, there's, there's, there's not enough both townhomes and single-family on the market today. A healthy equilibrium in a balanced market, your house should sit on the market for six months and that's healthy. Your house probably wouldn't even sit on the market for six seconds today, given the conditions and where we are in the market cycle. Allowing builders to build both townhome and single-family, providing buyers the option, is very important for a healthy market balance. Fort Mill Housing Update. As of Friday, when I was polling MLS, in all of Fort Mill, assigned to all three high schools in Fort Mill, there are only twenty houses that are new construction. Fourteen of them are townhomes with an average listing of four-nineteen. They're coming out of two active communities, both in the Tiga Cay area. Then there are only six active new listings in Fort Mill that average out to above a million dollars. On the resale side, there's only thirty-two listings. The average townhome built in two thousand four is three sixty-eight. And on the resale side for single-family, there's twenty-seven listings, average price of seven hundred and ten thousand, built in nineteen ninety-five. Our product in this location will be above the cost to serve. We will be in the mid-four hundreds, serving a buyer that's gonna purchase a home that's nineteen hundred to twenty-one hundred square feet. They're gonna consist of three bedrooms, which I know Fort Mill schools and the impacts that we're seeing, this buyer is likely going to be a young couple, just getting started, may or may not have children, but the impact to the elementary school on Pleasant Knoll will be minimal and there's currently room in that particular school. I wanna take the time now to pass the presentation to Bailey Patrick Jr. with MPV. MPV is the brokerage firm that's listing the property. They've got the relationship with the Nevins and the Hawkins family, who are longtime owners in York County. I'm gonna close with that. If you have any questions, please, please let me know.
We typically just listen during the public hearing. Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Bailey Patrick and I'm with MPV Properties. Our firm specializes in land brokerage and we also have a commercial development arm that's built retail, office, industrial projects over the years. I've personally been trying to help the Nevins family sell this property since two thousand seventeen, which is when they made the collective family's decision to sell the property. At that time, we marketed the property for several months before signing an agreement with Turwilly or Pappas. They had a mixed-use project planned and they're a very reputable developer. They built the Bearwick Town Center in Steel Creek, southwest Charlotte. Ultimately, that project died because of the impact fees that were passed in two thousand eighteen and they were also unsure about the zoning, whether the property would be rezoned for mixed-use development. So we went back to the drawing board at that point with the understanding that York County really wanted employment uses for that property. And we tried to make that work, but the vast majority of interest came from residential builders and apartment developers. So after, you know, four or five years of trying, we ultimately decided to sign a contract with TriPoint Homes and we knew we'd have to go through this process to get the property rezoned. We felt like they were the best fit there. You know, Margaret obviously lives in Fort Mill and we thought they'd be good stewards of this family property. And just speaking to the specifics of the property and why I don't think commercial developers and businesses have been interested. First is the lack of frontage on Colethorpe Road. I don't know if we can pull up a slide just showing the property, but you'll see that there's, I mean, there's maybe a hundred feet of frontage. There's hardly enough room for a residential street to go through there. And business owners, you know, commercial developers, they want frontage, they want signage potential, they want easy in and out for their employees. You can see it, it's hardly any frontage. So I think that's one reason why they weren't interested in the property. The second is even if it was located, you know, with a lot of frontage at an intersection, the actual road, Colethorpe Road, is not built to handle truck traffic, heavy, you know, car traffic. So even if this was, you know, a site that had more frontage, I think it's so obvious that it's, you know, a residential feeling area that, you know, the infrastructure's just not there to support that kind of use. And just to give you one example, supporting this, our company developed the roads and infrastructure at Lakemont Business Park, which is in northern York County, just south of Carowinds. And we started running out of land in that business park, selling it to different developers and end-users. And I would, you know, go to them and say, "We've got this property down on Colethorpe, you know, I know we're running out of land here." And they would drive by it and we didn't receive one offer from any of those prospects that we tried to turn to the, to the Nevins family property. I think, I think they probably saw the writing on the wall that, you know, the Haber Sham neighborhood and other surrounding neighbors would, would come out in full force against the traffic, the noise, the, you know, out-of-place architecture associated with those type of commercial projects. In summary, I'd just like to say that the market has clearly told me over the past five years that residential is the most desired use for this property. It's the least disruptive to the neighbors from a traffic perspective and I feel like it just fits in better with the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor?
Good evening. My name is Kelly Hawkins. My family owns the parcel of land at eighteen seventy-six Colethorpe Road. We've been part of the Fort Mill Township for over four generations. The land was purchased by my grandfather in the late nineteen forties and he eventually built his house that is still there in the mid-nineteen fifties. We've seen substantial growth, obviously, over the last twenty years in Fort Mill and when we decided to put the land on the market, we really wanted something built there that would have the least amount of impact on the surrounding neighbors, but would also be something that would benefit the citizens of Fort Mill as well. We definitely believe that TriPoint will offer both of these things and so we hope that the rezoning will be approved so that TriPoint and my family can move forward with this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Please come forward. Just keep coming.
My name's David Jennings and I live at nineteen eighteen Colethorpe Road in Fort Mill, South Carolina. Lived there almost all my life. But my property directly contacts the Nevins property on the south and the east sides of my lot, which is Lot Two. And I've met with Margaret Puckett and Luke Woodburn from TriPoint Homes and somebody from BGE Engineering two or three times. I found them to be very reasonable and they seem to be the kind of people that I feel good about trusting. And they've proposed a very nice project with quality homes that will complement the residential flavor of the neighborhood. And that neighborhood consists across the street of Haber Sham subdivision. And my sister's house and my house and Ms. Newton's house and the neck beside her, it doesn't even have a number, is a dentist office. And then number four is the hotel property and five is Forest Hills Church. But if you, if you draw, if you look at that property, the ten acres in this deal, there's nothing on the north side except me and my sister's houses. There's nothing on the east side except Ms. Newton's and the dentist office. There's nothing on the east side except Ms. Newton's and the dentist office. There's nothing on the south side except that piece of property coming from the hotel up there and then Forest Hill Church. You got one commercial building on the east side of that property. So you draw a line, that pretty much looks to me like it ought to be residential. You know, to stick, to reject this just to try to go with light industrial or something just does not seem to fit with the layout of the area. And I, I fully support TriPoint Homes project. They've redone it and cut down on the number of homes. They're nicer homes and got nice buffer zones that was required by planning for tree areas. But, you know, I've heard, I, I don't support it being light industrial. And, you know, I've, I've been in this county all my life in the fire service, and, you know, I'm the chief of Flint Hill Fire District, so that's the whole northern side of Fort Mill, that point that goes up to Charlotte. And we're 15.4 square miles in that fire district, which is properties in that fire district. The county as a whole has 696. So we're 2.2% of the square miles in the county. Population-wise, 8.9% of the York County population lives in those 15.4 square miles. But tax value-wise, that tax value from that 15.4 miles represents 21.35% of all the total unincorporated tax base in York County. And that's from fiscal year '21, the last one we have verified numbers on. But it doesn't sound like that area's hurting for any type of commercial property. And, I mean, it's like a Bonanza gold mine for the school district, people like us have a tax district. I mean, the commercial value of that property is unreal. But to try to squeeze in, when you got commercial on one side of the four sides and try to squeeze something in there that's surrounded by residential-type buildings that, you know, I just don't, I just don't, this sounds more like a favor or something, or somebody made a recommendation, and nobody had any other facts to oppose it. But this is not a good fit, and I really ask the council to rethink the planning commission's recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Jennings.
Make this residential.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Catherine Jennings. I live at 1926 Colethorpe Road, Fort Mill. I support the TriPoint Homes proposal for the Nevens property. I don't support light industrial because it's, it's just not a good fit. My family has lived on Colethorpe Road since my grandparents purchased a large farm in December of 1944, and I live on a part of their original acreage. My parcel fronts the Nevens property, which sits between me and the Forest Hill Church. And I would like you to really consider that this should stay residential and not go commercial because there's no access for any commercial to Colethorpe Road that would support it. So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wish to speak in favor?
Good evening. I'll be quick. I'm Ben Johnson. I represent TriPoint Homes. Thank you for your time tonight and for hearing us.
Yes, sir.
We, we weren't able to give input to the planning commission, so it's important that we have this chance to do it tonight, and thank you for, I know you're busy, and thank you for your time. Rezoning is a legislative function, it's quintessential, it's just, it's, you have discretion. No single factor is going to control your decision. The quintessential factor is compatibility with the joint in uses, and is it reasonable? And you've heard tonight that it, that a transition here involving townhomes to these single-family residences of the Jennings and others, as well as protecting the church, which has a playground behind it, would be completely compatible with the existing uses. As Mr. Patrick said, if you look between Parcels 3 and 2, there's this, this tiny bit of frontage, and, and that is the, that's going to be the road access for the townhome community. But if you thought about commercial, which depends on significant frontage, it's just out there, and that's why, as good as the Patricks are, it hasn't been sold in five years. If you couldn't do commercial there, then we would need to look at industrial or some other heavier use, which, and you've heard the neighbors tonight, they don't want that. They want, they want a thoughtful community like TriPoint is offering, which will serve as a, as a nice transition to the single-family, both on the south side of Colethorpe and on the north side of Colethorpe. If, with the greatest respect for the staff, but the, I think the report overlooked the significant residences on the south side of Colethorpe that are very much affected by this, and I think Chief Jennings said it best, that, that it, that it's preferable that we have this townhome project to, to transition to him. And having a hard stop of, of industrial right up against a single-family house of the kind we're talking about, or really any, is just too, it's just not, it's, it's just not a compatible use. And then the Forest Hill Church has its playground behind there. They cannot be here tonight, but you have their letter. They very much support the TriPoint project. Utilities and traffic are nonissues. I don't ever mean to say that traffic is a nonissue in Fort Mill, but this is not a significant project. It's a small scale, and, and the traffic studies support, as well as I think DOT supports the, the project here from a traffic standpoint without requiring improvements. The, is, is, as Ms. Puckett said, the project serves an important function of affording additional housing. We don't have houses. People are bidding up the market. We have employers coming here whose workers can't find homes that they can afford, can't find homes, period, and it's important that we think about that. I realize that, that Mr. Hamilton and Mr. Ardet are not here tonight. I, I've not spoken with them directly, but I know that my client has. I think it would be important for them to hear and to know of the support that's expressed here tonight by the immediate neighbors who would be affected by this project. I think there's this, and I know, I've been here plenty of times, and you, you're used to neighbors coming out saying, "No, don't do this." And I think if they heard what we heard tonight of significant support for this project by the people immediately affected, it would make a difference to them and the way they think. And I don't want to speak for them in terms of how they might think about the project, and I don't mean to, I don't mean to leave out Mr. Guffey either. And so I would suggest and respectfully request that this council give first reading to this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor? Is there anyone who wishes to speak against? Please come forward, state your name, and give your address.
My name's Robin Peterson. I'm at 5556 Alexandrite Way, and I have a second property at 730 Shellstone Place in Fort Mill. I am the immediate neighbor, and I actually did not plan to speak on this issue, but I feel very strongly about the overbuilding in Fort Mill. I know, I'm over in the Waterstone area, and we, my sons have previously attended the schools that are right around that area, which are Pleasant Knoll Middle School and Pleasant Knoll Elementary, that would be servicing, I presume, that area. Colethorpe actually is a very industrial-looking road. It cuts through, it's the, I have five children, it's a sneaky cut-through road that people use when everything gets clogged up because all of the roads have become very heavy. The new diverging diamond has somewhat got things going on Gold Hill Road, but for that, we really don't need more apartments. That inflames everybody. It's a big discussion in Fort Mill. So I am the neighbor. Also, I do realize that it seems our Fort Mill School District is always talking about needing more money because everything, all of the new growth and the impact fees. So they have a conduit municipal bond issuer. They have bonds that we voted on. They have these impact fees. They have who-knows-what other money sources, and they still need more money. So I'm not really sure why we need more apartments that are going to bring new families in. And we, I, I heard the argument that we don't, you know, that this is going to probably be a young family, but my experience is, I own a condo, and I own a larger home, is that we really don't know who is going to rent that home, and because, yes, we do, we have a lovely community that's very popular, Antigua-K in Fort Mill, we don't know. We're seeing young, larger, you know, three-children homes, you know, people moving into three-bedroom condos right now with their families. And yes, there is a shortage of homes. I see that. But now, when I look at the other issue, Morning Star Tower, which has 55-plus homes in Fort Mill, I think we need more homes built like that. That, that already exists. For seniors to come and join maybe their, you know, their kids and grandchildren here in a safe environment, that makes a lot more sense to me, and it makes no impact on the school system. And, you know, they do drive, but it makes a little bit less impact on the commute during the day, you know, on the, you know, the evening and morning commute, and the school-time commute as well. And so I am just a hard pass on this. I do believe that it's a little deceptive that this isn't an industrial place. Yes, I think an industrial or something could go there, and this is a very industrial-looking road to me. So as a citizen that lives there, I just say, I think that the planning commission did a, made a very good decision, and thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wish to speak against?
Move to close. Second.
Motion and a second to close public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, public hearing is closed. Do we have a new motion?
Move to approve first reading, as Mr. Johnson used to love to hear us say, for sake of discussion.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
I'd just like to say, I want to, since the council member who was elected to represent this area is not here tonight, and the one who we redistrict into the area is not here tonight either, I think it makes more sense to pass this on a first reading and let them talk with the citizens and let them come back. They're the ones that represent these people. And let's vote next reading when we have a full staff up here instead of just us.
Any other discussion?
I was just going to say, I heard some very interesting details about this particular project. What stood out to me most is that what our comp plan said this property was supposed to be, or what staff has looked for this to happen in this area. We don't always get it right. You know, I heard the gentleman say this property went up for sale back in 2017, maybe. Staff thinking this is going to be commercial, industrial. Typically, property wouldn't sit that long if it was intended to be commercial. And the only interest to come from it being residential, and looking across the street on this diagram here, you see that it's not far-fetched to say residential would fit here with the three adjacent, three connecting properties with homes on them, across the street with homes on them. I honestly think we would be doing a disservice to those neighbors, the church, if we tried to force industrial into this particular property. Like the Realtor said, there's no road frontage. You know, if I owned a business or I was wanting to locate, I want to be visible from the street. And if manufacturing went there, they're going to have to ship something out, and it's going to really be more, with their trucks on the road, more traffic from employers, employees coming to and from. It may be a third-shift operation that's running first, second, and third shift, and I think that would really disrupt, you know, what's, I seem to be the, the character with a church there and residential homes immediately to the right, to the left, and across the street. You know, the comp plan is not something etched in stone. It can be changed. It's very liquid. And our staff did spend a lot of time trying to get it right, but it's just a document on paper that's been used as a tool to guide some of our decision-making down the road and in the immediate future. But we don't have to always say, just because the comp plan doesn't specify this area to, to become residential, it can become residential. We can, we can hope for it to be something industrial, but I honestly, just looking at what we have in front of us, I, I think townhomes would be a good fit. You know, obviously, if it was single-family homes, it'd probably be less, but 48 townhomes, it's not a huge impact project. It's, to me, relatively small in scale, but, and, and just hearing what's on the market in Fort Mill. You know, our staff is not, our staff doesn't go out and do market analysis of, or cost analysis of what, what a property should go for, or what it should actually be, but, you know, they've done their best to make educated guesses what they saw coming to the area. And we've seen several projects and rezonings come before us that went against the comp plan. Obviously, our planning commission does a good job of trying to vet certain interests for area. They don't always get it right. We don't always get it right. So I'm glad there's a process that allows us to have the ultimate say because we're the elected officials who ultimately make the decision, who are ultimately going to be responsible for it. So just looking here and, and the wishes of the current councilmember's district, who I think should be here, he reached out to us and said he supported it, and obviously, we're hearing that this particular property is going to be in another councilmember's district. I would hate for anyone to start a project talking to a councilmember, get that initial support, there's a net flying around, get that initial support and move forward with designs and coming up with concepts, and then all of a sudden it's going to a different councilmember's district, and they've wasted a lot of money, wasted a lot of time and resources only to find out that maybe that incoming councilmember's district may not support it. You know, I think that wouldn't be fair to the petitioner. I don't think it'll be right to switch the goalposts in the middle of the kick, so to speak. So I'm, I'm glad to hear that the current councilmember does support it. He wanted to be here, and I think he should hear the same support. So hopefully you guys and young ladies will have the opportunity to come back and, or reach out to both Joel and Tom to express your interest. We get tons of emails, we get tons of phone calls, so I would encourage you to continue those phone calls, continue those emails, and show those support. And if, at the next, at the second reading, by all means, come back and, and show your support for this project because we do so many times when people are trying to do residential, we hear about whether it's traffic or whatever. We very rarely hear people come out and support residential projects, and I'm glad to see the support was there. The research has been done by the petitioner, the builder. It's good to see everyone coming out because this is your community, you're the neighbors, and we want to make sure that we're getting it right by what you guys feel is a good fit, not just what our staff or some consultant has put on paper to say it was a good fit. So I appreciate everyone coming out.
In my district, the biggest fear is that longtime property owners will sell their property for townhomes or apartments, or a lot of homes on a, on a high-dense, in a high-dense neighborhood. I mean, in this case, when you look at this, you'll see that all of the homes shown above, all those little red arrows, are going to fit that many people, that same number of people are going to fit into 10.82 acres. That's high density. Maybe, maybe Fort Mill is beyond saving anything, and I don't, I don't know that this has to be industrial. I think it could, you know, it could be single-family. The people that are living there are probably very excited that they have the property that they have. I do agree that the councilmembers who represent Fort Mill should be the ones to weigh in on this, so I'm, I'm in favor tonight of getting this to second reading.
And I will also echo that, I think, out of respect for the councilmembers who represent the area and who aren't here, that we need to allow this to move forward so that we can hear from them and let them be involved in the discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Rezoning action. Hold a public hearing and consider first reading, case number 22-09, tax map number 72100003, zoning to rezon from UD to LI, two acres in District 7. Ms. Dill.
Thank you. As you said, this is to rezon from UD to LI. It's on Terry Road in Fort Mill. It's a two-acre parcel. It's just on the west side of 21. It's sort of tucked behind Ross, as you can see. It's a, it's a heavily wooded piece of property at the end of the small road, Terry Road. The reason for the rezoning, this is kind of unusual, is that they can do this use in UD, the same use in LI. The reason for the rezoning is because RECODE has made some changes to our requirements for design standards, and it would capture design standards if it's a warehouse in UD, but not if it's a warehouse in LI. So the option here is to go ahead and, and rezon the property over to LI to not have to do those design standard requirements for the warehouse. Had they been on arterial, it's still a little bit required no matter what. So because it's sort of tucked away, it's not on a main road, staff was supportive of that rezoning to, to LI. And it also achieves one of your objectives to be able And it also achieves one of your objectives to be able to reduce some of the UD properties. And fortunately for the applicant, it was free of charge. See, as you're gonna be, they're gonna be building a fifty-four hundred square foot warehouse, just a very small building to be able to store their Christmas decorations. Staff recommends approval. So does planning commissioner by eight to zero vote. The property around there is all UD. It's pretty much all industrial. So this fits with the, with the actual use.
Thank you, Ms. Dill. Any questions of staff? Thank you. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of this rezoning? Is there anyone who wishes to speak against?
Move to close. Second.
Motion and a second to close public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Public hearing is closed. Do we have a new motion?
Move to approve. Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes. Counsel to hold a public hearing and provide third reading of an ordinance authorizing the sale of five plus or minus acres of land located on McFarland Road, York, currently identified as a portion of tax map number four zero one zero 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 two, to entertain an offer to purchase the parcel to authorize the chairman to execute the contract of sale indeed to provide for a public hearing and to provide for other matters relating thereto. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor? Is there anyone who wishes to speak against?
Move to close. Second.
Motion and a second to close public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Public hearing is closed. Do we have a new motion?
Move to approve third reading. Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes. We do not have any old business. We move now to new business. Item number one. Counsel to consider approving first reading by title only of an ordinance to amend the code of the County of York, South Carolina, Chapter fifty-one point oh five, water and sewer rates and charges, terms and conditions of service, Sections B two and B ten, in order to amend the water rate schedule and sewer rate schedule and to provide for matters related thereto.
Move to approve.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Roddy.
Is any of this taken into account or because of the new rates coming up from Rock Hill?
I think that's a good question. Mr. Madden, can you explain why we're having to do this?
We are passing along only the rate increases from the city of Rock Hill.
Thank you.
And the rate increases at this point are, what are the rate increases? And can you give us some information about that?
I believe off the top of my head, I think the water is eleven percent, sewer is three percent. And again, so we're not passing along those entire increases to your bill, only the portion of the wholesale water that we're buying from Rock Hill. That increase is what we're passing along.
So if I understand correctly, we're not passing along the entire increase? So we're gonna, this council is gonna absorb some of those?
No, what I'm, you're, the bill that our customers receive, we have the wholesale cost of the water and then all other expenses, water and sewer fund is paid for out of that bill. The portion that if we're buying water from a dollar from Rock Hill and now it's a dollar eleven, we're passing along that eleven percent. Nothing more.
So eleven percent increase in one year. Can you tell us what the increase has been over the past seven years?
Past seven years, I believe it's basically doubled. I'm not, off the top of my head, I'm not sure. There have been substantial increases over the last seven years in water and sewer, very substantial.
Thank you. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes. Counsel to consider adopting a resolution directing York County Planning Commission to conduct the studies related to the imposition of a development impact fee applicable within the geographic area of the York School District One and associated with the public education facilities for grades K through twelve, considered necessary for the proper education of the school district's children and recommend a resulting impact fee ordinance related thereto.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
I'll just mention that I believe management is, or legal is in the process of finding us another expert to help us and help planning staff, planning commission through the review of this.
That is correct.
Any other comments? Any other discussion? Just for folks who, who don't understand this, this is the process where there's been a request from York School District to request an impact fee. And so this will now move to the planning commission for them to study this and they will be provided an expert in order to help them do the, the analysis that they need to do. All those in favor of the motion say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes. Counsel to consider approving a resolution supporting the county's evaluation of concurrency within York County so that school district educational facilities can adequately accommodate growth resulting from development within the county at a managed pace and so that the York County Planning Commission and County Council can benefit from an additional evaluative tool for, for matters coming before each body, directing York County management and/or the Office of the County Attorney to retain consultant legal representation and furtherance of this objective and providing for other matters related thereto. Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Roddy?
I'll just say that I still have a lot of questions about this one, but it's very interesting to me. I'm always interested in trying to find any tools we can try to help the school districts to, to pay for the growth and to, you know, manage the growth however we can. And I had not heard of this until Councilmember Love, I believe, found it and brought the idea up. And so I look forward to learning more about it. I've got concerns about it as far as it only covering the unincorporated areas and municipalities not having a concurrency type plan. But I'm always open to trying to learn more and see how we can improve things, so.
If I'm correct, I think my understanding of this is if we're getting projects, mainly residential projects that's gonna locate in an unincorporated area, we want the school district to weigh in to see if they can handle this, students handle the extra capacity. Okay, so yeah.
Any other discussion? Certainly don't have any trouble taking a look at and how, and exploring all options and as long as we've got legal and someone to help us along that process. All those in favor of the resolution, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes. Counsel to consider first reading by title only of an ordinance to establish operating and capital budgets for the operation of the county government of York County for the fiscal year commencing July first, twenty twenty-two, to provide for the levy of taxes for York County for the fiscal year commencing July one, twenty twenty-two, to provide for the expenditure of tax revenues and other county funds and provide for other fiscal matters relating to county government.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Winkler.
Quickly, I just want to say, in case any of you are wondering, this is what we're voting on tonight on the first reading. So those of you that are sitting out there that are looking to replace me in a few months, look forward to some reading. And it, I, it, there's a lot in there, but it's very important that we understand it and go through it. And I thank your staff for putting all this together for us to have all the details on it. And I look forward to workshops coming up to make sure we understand it all.
Mr. Roddy.
I just want to say, as usual, another exciting budget season coming up. It's always interesting to see as we thumb through that York County budget, some of the things that different departments have asked for, some of the things that we're gonna move forward with, some of the things that we're not gonna move forward with. But one thing that I always ask staff at the beginning of this budget process is, let's make sure we take care of the face of York County. That's the people that's going, the boots on the ground, that's worked in these offices, that works the front line, that works in public works, our landfills, all of our departments. Because they're the face of York County. So when something goes wrong on the front lines, obviously, we, we will, we'll deal with it as council and management staff. But our guys and girls do such a tremendous job of being the face of all the great staff and things that are put together for this council, things that are put together for the community. But we have to make sure with the rise in cost of living and things that's going on, I always make sure that we are definitely looking to retain some of our most well seasoned employees. Because when I first got on council, we haven't given out any raises in several years and we saw people leaving York County, going to work in the, in the private sector. And we've changed that mentality over the years. We're no longer a training ground for the private sector. We've started to really do a great job of taking care of our staff. And we have some long timers who've been with this county and have made a commitment and a lifelong commitment. I've seen people start out at York County and when they come here and stand before us in their retirement speech, they, some of them has indicated that they didn't think they would be here thirty, forty years. But I think we've changed that mentality and gotten back to people wanting to invest their talents into county government. And I think that's because we have a, a good work environment and we do a really good job of taking care of the needs of our employees who take care of the needs of this community. And my hat goes off to staff for putting this budget together. It's always interesting to see what comes, what we flush out and what we accept. But I look forward to another good budget season where we're always putting the needs of our community first before we decide to make a decision on that budget.
Thank you. Another discussion? I do want to echo the fact that we appreciate the management for putting together a budget. We know that you all work hard to look out for the taxpayer interest and that's something we have a lot of confidence in and we appreciate the work that you do. I would ask, you know, we've got the book and we just got it Friday, that this be made available publicly so that everyone in here can go and enjoy all of the reading and see what their public budget looks like. And if you have any questions, come out. We've got workshops and we've got a public hearing. We would love to see you there. All those in favor of the motion say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes. Counsel to consider approving first reading by title only of an ordinance to abolish the special tax district known as the York County Recreation Tax District in York County effective as of December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, as described more particularly herein, to specify the time and application of the final levy of taxes for the operation and maintenance of the York County Recreation Tax District, to provide for the winding down and cessation of operations of the York County Recreation Tax District as an administrative division of the county, to provide for a public hearing and to provide for other matters related thereto. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Winkler.
I'm the only one on this end, so I guess it's easier. I start out on this end every time. This is something that I've struggled with. I do believe that this ordinance in its current form has outlived its usefulness in its life. It was started before any of us sitting up here were on council. And they were, you know, the, the idea was back then, the municipalities were charging children who wanted to play, you know, baseball, soccer, football, whatever, in their rec re league, more money if they lived in the county than if they lived in the city. And so the county started this and the agreement back then, and I've, and I've spoken with past council member Williams, who was up here when, when they did it. I think he was the only one around that I've known that I've talked to about it. But that was the original intent of it and it has changed over the years. There's not as many people playing that ball now. You know, a lot more people play travel ball. But there are still a lot of children who play it. And so in its current form, I think it's outlived what it was intended for. My concern is for the municipalities in District Three that are small municipalities. And this is a large portion of their money that they do get from this. And to end it cold turkey, which we're not quite cold turkey, we're, we're looking at, you know, we're giving them a notice that it's ending, but it will cause, I believe, some consequences. I just want to make sure we understand what all those consequences are because there will be probably higher fees for our families that, that live outside the cities to play ball in the city, rec leagues and stuff because they don't play, don't pay taxes in the cities so the cities will charge them more. You know, that's more of a thing where if you use it, you pay for it. So that may be the best way to go. But I look forward to us all hashing this out and figuring out what the, the best option is for it. I just always have concern for our smaller municipalities, especially in District Three, where this is a large portion of their money for their rec ball and stuff. And, and our citizens in District Three who can't afford some of those homes we've been talking about tonight that are four and five and six hundred thousand dollar homes and they can't afford to pay for travel ball, which is very expensive. So I, I'm worried about those and look forward to hashing this out.
Any other discussion?
Just go down the line. Since we have so few council members here, I get to take a little extra time to plate my cakes. Well, I just want to let the public know, we had some extensive conversation about what to do with this, basically a tax on the unincorporated areas. And trust me, we had some real healthy conversations, some back and forth. And, and one thing I like about being on this council is that we don't always agree. We've got seven different personalities up here. We all have York County's best interests at heart. But we have some real good dialogue as to how to handle this. Some people wanted to cut it off right away and some wanted to delay it another year. And so ultimately, we came up with the decision to let everything go through this fiscal year because we know municipalities have already kind of started to work on their budgets as well. And based off what we've given them in the previous years, how do we come up with a way to make it fair to them as well as doing what we feel is the right thing to do by not taking monies out of the unincorporated areas and just turning it over to the municipalities? We heard several speakers come up this evening to talk about, you know, doing away with, with the rec fund. And it, it has served its purpose, but things are changing. You know, the, the need has changed. The use for this money has changed. And we're trying to at least keep up with the times and balance things out because it is your tax dollars. And, and I, I got the comment that Mr. Billy Hagner made, you know, we have no say once we turn this money over. But the intended use of it was to offset the costs of unincorporated citizens participating in municipalities' sports and rec leagues. And we all know with the evolution of more travel ball, city participation seems to have gone down somewhat because more people are playing the travel ball. Because let's face it, they want to get out and explore and, and take the kids all around the country, playing ball on, on Saturdays and Sundays and the weekends and not so much during the school week. But the rec leagues in some of the municipalities are still healthy. But we just didn't feel like it was as healthy coming from the unincorporated areas. We didn't feel like it was still a good fit to fund the municipalities when they so heavily not, it's not going to offset the costs of unincorporated citizens participating, but more of a budgetary situation where they're using the money not so much to offset the cost. So we had some healthy conversations. And I'm sure we will probably look to institute something to assist our county residents while they participate in municipality recreation leagues. But at this time, I, I agree with having a sunset date on this unincorporated area tax. And hopefully, we'll have that, continue to have that healthy discussion as to how do we soften the blow to the additional fees if the municipalities decide to go back to charging county residents more to participate in their leagues. And so we'll deal with it based on what they decide to do. Hopefully, they can keep the fees still manageable for unincorporated citizens to participate. And if they don't, I'm sure this body, if I'm sitting up here, we'll have that healthy discussion as to how do we continue to offset some of those fees? We just won't, don't want to leave our county residents paying a substantial amount more. But we'll deal with it if we have to. But at this time, I do support not taxing our county residents to turn that money over to our municipalities.
It's interesting how one point five mils can look like a lot or it can look like a little bit, depending on where you are on something. I've always said you can make a case for or against something. So in my opinion, ladies and gentlemen, this is a tax cut for every single person in the unincorporated areas of York County. And I want to tell you how it got on my radar. In two thousand sixteen, the same election that put me in this seat also approved and passed in the Lake Wile area, a tax district for the Field Day Park. It's a rec tax, Lake Wile rec tax. So when I started looking at that in two thousand seventeen, when I got on this council, which is the first time that I actually brought this up and met with my own local municipality, the town of Clover, to say, hey, you know, y'all are getting some money. And wasn't quite sure where that money was coming from, but y'all are getting some money. And how about sharing that with us? Because now we've got an entity and we're trying to provide recreation. And believe it or not, there are constituents of mine in the Lake Wile area that live in trailers without windows and doors. So this began as a way to help people that live in those conditions so that their children can participate in sports. So I'm very cognizant of, of that and the fact that there are also those people in the Lake Wile area who, we, we, we don't recoup any money from this. But we put over a third of the money into this. So two thousand seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, I waited. Two thousand twenty-one, I had county management bring this up to the rec coalition and say, hey, what are we gonna do about this? Are we gonna give Lake Wile a piece of the pie? Because we are, we, we qualify for a recreation provider, just like the municipalities now. And the answer to that was, no, we're not gonna give up. We don't really want to give up our money. And my point is, it's not your money. It's mostly our money. And if you don't want to play fair and level the playing fields, then I'm gonna pursue this again next year, which they were, they were warned of that also. So this is next year. So they've had, for those council members who want to, you know, do this a little bit at a time, piece by piece, over the next couple of years, maybe, they, they've had a lot of time. Since Field Day Park was approved, the, the people, just in that footprint, just in the Lake Wile footprint, Wally footprint, that are funding Field Day Park, which we voted to do, so we're really happy about that, and we're happy that we can provide that for our community and for the rest of York County, and, gosh, people travel from all over to Field Day Park. But we've put in since that time approximately $2 million. That's a lot. Every year, I'm going to give you a couple of numbers, we also are fortunate to have, it's kind of bittersweet, but we have a nuclear power plant in the district, which also provides a chunk of the money for recreation throughout the county. But the people of Lake Wally put in $504,000 last year. That's what we were, that was the tax that was collected from just the people in Lake Wally. Under normal circumstances, if we were a municipality, we would get some of that money back. Actually, let me change that. If we were a municipality, we wouldn't be putting anything in, and we would be getting a piece of that pie. So I feel like, and I'm going to show you that pie, I feel like that we have provided a lot of the ingredients for the pie, and the rec coalition is not really interested in allowing us a bite of the pie. And it is also concerning that we now have a person, a former councilman, who was on this council when this was passed, who has now joined that rec coalition, representing the Field Day Park area. And I would be willing to bet, not much, but I would be willing to bet a little, that he has maybe not been included in some correspondence going back and forth between the other members of that rec coalition over the last month or so. That's very concerning. And when they vote to do or to not do, that's a seven to one, I think it's seven, is it seven of them? That's a seven to one vote. That's concerning. So let me show you the pie. I asked Karen to just, so this first picture, I'm going to have to look at it on my screen, so I'm going to talk with it over my shoulder. So we'll go to that, to the first, this is the fiscal year '22 recreation taxes that have been raised, and you can see that Clover School District, unincorporated area, is, and this is all of Clover School District, not just the Lake Wally side, is 36%. It's the highest of all the collection. Okay, so that's what we raised. And then this next slide, I want you to look at this. Red is always Lake Wally, and notice there is no red on this one, because we didn't get anything. And for 14 years, we haven't gotten anything. But the most important years are these past five, and we're going into year six, where we're still not getting anything. So I believe this has run its course. When we go to them and we, to the rec coalition, and we say, you know, we'd like for you to level the playing field, we would like for you to make us whole, whole, because we're putting money in and not getting anything out. Last year, we were allowed the growth, which means the amount that was over and above what was collected the year before, we got that. It was $136,000. If you go to the next slide, you'll see this is, what is this slide? This shows what we would be getting today, so 10%. So if you look at these maps, you just see that it's just not an equitable tax. I think most of the people in the unincorporated areas of York County are not aware they're even paying the tax. So it's concerning. And I'm speaking mostly on behalf of the taxpayers in the, on the Lake Wally side of my district, but across the county, I think it's a tax that has absolutely run its course. And so I'm sure that when we have our workshop, this will come up, this is on our agenda for the next workshop, and I'm sure that some of that rec coalition membership will be here for that. And I'm interested in hearing from them how they believe that this is fair. And I believe in things being fair and equitable. When you talk about sports and keeping things fair on a field, whether you're playing football or golf or soccer or whatever it is, I'm interested in hearing from them why they think this is possibly fair. And I'm open-minded, but I'm pretty determined at this moment that this should end, there should be a sunset on this at the end of this year. Thank you.
Just so, just to wrap this up, this, some misconceptions, this particular ordinance revision does not cut any funding for this upcoming year. Each municipality will be kept whole, and this sunset, if approved by council as we move forward, would give plenty of time in order to deal with planning moving forward. Again, this is title only. We do have a workshop next week, we have a public hearing, and there are a lot of things that I think will be aired out in those meetings. One thing I will say is this council has been very supportive of recreation, as long as it's done in a fair and responsible way, doesn't burden the taxpayers, and you can show accountability. I've been very proud of our council for doing that. This particular ordinance has problems with it and needs to be fixed. All those in favor of the first reading, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion passes three to one. Counsel to consider approving the execution of an engineering design contract with DeVita and Associates of Charlotte, North Carolina for $33,600 for design of the HVAC replacement and upgrades at the York County Planning Facility as part of the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds program.
Move to approve.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. We do not have any committee reports, any council member, new non-agenda comments.
I just want to remind everybody on behalf of our four mill councilmembers that Strawberry Festival starts this weekend, and that's always a big fun thing that we do, South Carolina Strawberry Festival. And so check that out online, their Facebook page is @SouthCarolinaStrawberryFestival.
What else?
You know this is my, I'll just, real quick, I know I had to ask staff to get back with me on the use of coronavirus funds, coronavirus relief funds for the fire department, as well as, and I think I spoke with Kevin since the last meeting, on some uses, some more uses of that fund. So I'm still, and I know Trish has been working real close with those monies, just curious to know if you guys have made a final decision about the fire departments being able to be used with those funds?
I'll take that if you don't mind, and she can, Trish can chime in if I get something wrong, but generally speaking, the coronavirus money came, we received an amount above the threshold to where we are required to follow certain guidelines, and they have to be qualified for those expenses. And a lot of communities got money without any real strings to it, or very minimal strings to what they could spend it on. We have a lot more, I guess, we need to meet a lot more standards in order to spend this money. However, a portion of the money we got was somewhat unrestricted, and that portion, like the portion other counties receive, could be used for such an expense. Being that that's a small amount of what we're getting, county management does not recommend that we use it for those expenses, but to answer your question specifically, there is a portion of the money that could be spent on that if council chose to.
Okay. We'll get back to that conversation on that part. I want to take this next minute to kind of touch on a real touchy issue that we've been experiencing here in Rock Hill the last, over the last week with the triple homicide. I know I've gotten plenty of phone calls from concerned citizens about youth programs and things, how can we reach more youth to get to them? We all know the dynamics of the case from, whether it was, I think, a 16 and 17-year-old, I think the oldest one was maybe 17 involved. We really have some challenges, and it's not just here in Rock Hill in York County, it's across the country, that many communities are experiencing incidents like these. I don't know if it's to the magnitude, but what our teenagers are getting involved in, the things that's attracting them outside of our schools, outside of the family homes, we really have to come together as a community. And we're just asking that each and every one of you to continue to pray for our teenagers, pray for our youth, keep those families who were involved in that tragic incident on last week in your prayers. We're going to get through this, just as we've gotten through other incidents, but it just, it really hits home when you have a 15, 16-year-old living in your home and knowing the, whether it's peer pressure, whether it's, you know, things that's attracting them outside of listening to what their parents are telling them. And I can, I probably can attest to, I'm sure every one of those kids' parents that talk to them about doing the right thing. But we know that when kids get with other kids, things change, decisions are made differently. The process changes. So continue to keep those families in your thoughts and prayers as they go through this difficult time, and hopefully, this will be the last one, we know it won't be, but we want to make sure that we're doing all we can as a community, we're doing all we can as a family. But our different municipalities certainly, I'm sure they're concerned with it as well. I haven't spoken with, I actually spoke to the chief of police a couple of days after it happened, and they were still piecing together, you know, what we were dealing with, whether it was gang-related or just isolated incident. But we do have some issues in, throughout York County with gangs, and I'm not saying this was gang-related, but we do want to be mindful that there are some bad things going on in every community across this country, but we just still need to be vigilant, from community leaders, from parents to job owners and community leaders. But we haven't given up on our youth, and we're going to still continue to fight for them each and every day. We just had a group of teachers here, we have some wonderful, excellent teachers. And I told the media, when I was interviewing for the, I did an interview about this incident, this is not a Rock Hill police issue, this is not a Rock Hill School District issue to me, and I feel confident in saying it, we got to get back to community, we got to get back to parenting and continue to instill in our young men and women the importance of respecting other people's property, and importance of respecting life itself, because once you pull that trigger to take a life, you can't put that bullet back in there. And it hurts even families who don't know these victims. It hurts families who don't even know the person that perpetrated this in our community. So keep that in mind as you're going about your day to life, and if you see a young man or young lady out somewhere, continue to encourage them to do the right thing and be respectful as they go about the day. Thank you.
Anyone else? We don't have any citizen concerns. Do we have a motion for executive session?
Yes, we make motion when we go into executive session for contractual matter involving Duke Energy's targeted underground program, receipt of legal advice on contractual matter with municipal inmate agreement involving Tika K., receipt of legal advice and a pending litigation update, and one more that was added in, proposed contractual matter involving Project Zanzabar.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We will move into executive session in five minutes. Do we have any motions?
Yes, move to authorize execution of an easement agreement with Duke Energy as discussed in executive session on parcel 070180-1007.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes.
Motion to approve intergovernmental agreement with Tika K. for municipal inmates and to allow legal councils to take measures as discussed in executive session.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion?
Yes, I would like, would it be appropriate for staff to explain to those who are watching online or reporters watching what we're doing here? What's this about? And why we're doing this?
Agreement.
Yes.
Would it be more appropriate for Michael to chime in on that? I mean, I don't mind trying to summarize it.
This is an agreement specifying the per deemed cost for municipal inmates that are housed at the, with York County for municipal violations, and it's an intergovernmental agreement specifying the relationship between the city of Tika K., York County, and the York County Sheriff with regards to those inmates.
Well, I guess what I was looking for here in that explanation was that Tika K. had signed the, was going to sign the agreement, as well as paid the arrears and be dropped from the lawsuit. Is that accurate statement?
Those are accurate statements, yes, sir.
Thank you.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes.
All right, one more. Authorize execution of a letter of intent and draft purchase agreement with conditions and amendments as discussed in executive session for Project Zanzabar.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.